To order this meeting of the planning board for April 4th, 2024. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, need to do a roll call.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Impampa. Cavino.
He's nodding here. We're gonna, I'm.
Sending a request.
We're gonna.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Okay. So as you can see, we have two members participating remotely tonight. The Town of Burlington will be holding the April 4th, 2024 meeting as a hybrid meeting. The governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March 31st, 2025.
As always, members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast, unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on the agenda should make plans for an in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. Please go to the townofberlingtonwebx.com. You can use the access code 23406234573. Members of the public looking to participate, please raise your hand and staff will send you a request to unmute at the appropriate time. This meeting is also being broadcast on the BCAT Government Channel, which can be found on Comcast 99, RCN 15, Verizon 41, and streamed on Facebook Live via the BCAT Facebook page.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is public participation. If there is someone in the audience or online who's here to speak on an item that is not on our agenda, please identify yourself now. Seeing no one, we will move on to announcements.
All right. The Burlington local election is happening this Saturday, April 6th, and that will be from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Burlington High School. The second MBTA Communities Public Information Session will be happening at a time closer to town meeting, and we will be publicizing that once the date and time have been chosen. And that will also be over a virtual meeting format. May Town Meeting will be on May 13th, and we also just want to let the public know that there was a article written this week in BCAT about the Burlington Police that they received equipment, uh, equipment donation from Vicon Detection, which was permitted by the Planning Board for, um, over North Ave in 2018 or 2019. And so they're using the Nighthawk handheld X-ray device to detect hidden contraband, weapons, explosives, as well as the Foxhound Trace Narcotics Analyzer, which detects a variety of narcotics, um, and both assists the officers while limiting the risk of property damage. And if you want to look, find the full article, it can be found on BCAT.
Yeah, and last night, I just want to give everybody an update. I was at the Land Use Committee meeting along with Melissa, and I presented the warrant articles for town meeting. We got through two of them, which is good. So the MBTA Communities warrant article was voted 7-1-0, so it was voted in approval. And then parking and landscape modernization, it was voted 6-1-1, so again, in approval. So just update on that. And I'll be going back for my last use table.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
Okay, thank you. We do not have.
Just for a question.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ernie.
I just wanted to extend our condolences to the family of a former Planning Board member, Jane Hyde. Jane was very, very good at, uh, multi-family 40B projects, and she was kind of our in-house expert on that. And when she got off the Planning Board, she was slowly missed, not only for that, she was also involved in the, uh, Southwest Park PDD and numerous things like that. So I just wanted to make sure that we recognized her having been on the Planning Board. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ernie. Bill, did you have something?
Yes, no, just a clarification. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just on the Land Use Committee votes, those are not approvals, right? Those are in.
No, those are recommendations.
Recommendations to town meeting.
Yeah, to town meeting, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One last thing, the Burlington Sculpture Park will be holding its next meeting on Monday morning at 8:00 AM via WebEx. We do not have any legal notices or nonapprovals, so we are moving on to Item 6, Administrative Matters. Item 6A is a discussion, Mall Road Mixed Use Zoning Initiative. Melissa Tantaklis, Economic Development Director, is presenting. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the introduction, and this is really meant to be a brief overview of where we are in the mixed-use rezoning effort. As many of you already know, we started about almost two years ago with support from the Urban Land Institute in Mass Development to explore this commercial district, which is the hub and engine of our commercial tax base. And what we came across is within this area, there's about 100 acres of infill opportunity, which is primarily building and surface parking lots. And why that really is come into a policy action and something that we're putting forward to Town Meeting in September is because this is really part of our story about implementing the master plan that we've worked on for many years, kind of leading up to the effort for the rezoning. It's really kind of also in here, we're trying to preserve commercial values. A lot of people ask me today, as Economic Development Director, you know, where things are in kind of the commercial. We hear so much about commercial office, occupancy, life science glut, being over-retailed, and all those factors are coming kind of together. We're not at a critical point, and what our objective with this effort is, is to position us in a better and enhancing Burlington, kind of for the next generation, for those next 30 years. And then through that, I think we can do better promotion of sustainable development, more open space. As we consider giving property owners more development capacity, our expectation as a community is to provide more open space and higher-level design for all the projects that go in here, and with a real emphasis on pedestrian connections, not just sidewalks along, you know, big, fast roads, but we're talking about streetscape, well-designed public realm that kind of connects beyond that. So, and, you know, long-term economic growth, as we talk about this, you know, market preferences have changed, where people want to be has changed since this development forum. This development forum worked really well. It was very car-oriented, very good for, you know, destination, retail, but it's now evolving, and we need to recognize that, and we're trying to prepare ourselves for that. So a couple of these slides here is just kind of a reference point for those of you who haven't seen the master plan. If you go into the master plan, just on the table of context, if you can go into any one category, there will be land use recommendations, transportation recommendations. Here I highlighted land use recommendations. If we go to the next slide, in particular, this zoning effort in the commercial district strives to meet all of these recommendations outlined in our master plan. And I'll read just a few here, straight from, you know, the plan itself. But first and foremost, to allow and encourage compact, well-organized development within commercial and retail areas of town. Promote a broader mix of uses in areas which will enhance efficient use of land, increase the quality of life, keep Burlington in pace with other communities as a great place to live, work, and visit. Raise the quality of design for buildings and site improvements so that they are attractive and valuable from private and the public perspective. Promote sustainable land use practices throughout the community, usually found through smart growth and compact development. Provide mitigation for negative impacts associated with development that will protect and enhance all areas of Burlington. We'll be looking at community benefits and other ways to kind of bring back more community value through projects and capture that. Lastly, preserve and enhance land devoted to open space. As you'll see through this plan, you know, we're really looking at some of the ecology that has been, you know, kind of asphalted over in a lot of ways, but the Vine Brook is one of those. And then just opening up and removing some of that asphalt as we kind of provide more compact, dense development, but it gives us an opportunity to open up some development as well. So we can skip to the next one, and I could read those, but we'll, we'll, we'll move on. So you can see the idea in terms of where we are with the master plan. So I'm going to just check in. I'm here tonight, Ted Brovitz was joining us, and I don't know if he is online or not.
Saw his name.
He is, okay. I cannot see everyone's face. So Ted wanted to share this presentation. He has about 10 more slides to go through, and then we'll do a Q and A. Madam Chair, does that work?
Yes.
Okay. So Ted, do you want to take it from here?
I was going to be able to speak because I was muted. I couldn't get myself unmuted, so. Anyways, thank you. Um, yeah, so I've been working with the town now for about a year and a half on this project. Before I got involved, David Gamble and his, his team did a really good job on, on Phase 1 and putting together an overall concept plan and report. And from there, we basically took it and started to, you know, take a closer look at the properties in the district and talked to a lot of property owners, business owners, interested residents, different boards and committees, just to get a sense of like, you know, what they saw, you know, happening and what they thought would be appropriate for the, the future of the district. We also had a pretty robust public participation program process. We had a three-day design workshop in which we had a lot of residents show up and really gave us a sense of like, what, you know, what's a scale development, what's the kind of uses they want in the district. But not only that, but like, how do we make better connections, both, you know, in terms of walking connections as well as, you know, traffic mitigation, and also, you know, making, you know, valuable, you know, meaningful open spaces. And, and so, hang on one sec, my dog is telling it. Sorry, he wanted to get up on his perch and watch out the window. Anyways, so with all the feedback we got from the public through the different boards and committees we, we talked with, we basically translated all that information into an overall vision plan. You can see that in the lower left-hand corner right there. And started to, again, you know, vet that with the community, get some feedback from property owners to see if it was realistic or not, if it matched, you know, the types of things that they were hoping to do in the future. And from there, we started putting together the zoning map and the zoning bylaws. So the process from here now is that we are still working on the bylaw. It's sort of a, it's something that's, it's a, it's a working document at this point. We're still taking a lot of input from different boards and property owners and businesses, and we will continue to do that as we approach the fall town meeting. This is sort of a complicated process because in order to adopt the bylaw, we have to, we have to make some changes to the series of different articles in the zoning bylaw. That starts with the districts themselves, Article 3, we have to add the new zoning map and the description of the district. To that section, the use regulations, we have to make some changes to, you know, the use, the table of use, so that we include the mixed district in that table, but also adding some new uses, particularly some residential and mixed-use types of uses. We have to make some adjustments to the dimensional requirements, because the new bylaw has its own dimensional requirements. And Article 10 and 11, which are special regulations, basically what that is, is there are certain performance standards for different types of uses that could have a potential impact on their surrounding neighbors. And so we want to make sure that if there's new development, you know, at a larger scale, we want to make sure that, you know, we, we take in consideration, you know, development and design standards so that we, we mitigate those potential impacts. And finally, adopting the bylaw, the mixed district bylaw itself. Go ahead, next. So basically today, left-hand side of the slide, you can see that there's, you know, five different districts in, in the, in the Mall Road project area. We've got general business, we've got general industrial, innovation, retail industrial, plan development, which is the, the district itself. And then what we're trying to do is sort of consolidate that into really sort of one, one district with one specific sort of special district at the intersection of Middlesex Turnpike and Mall Road. And so we would have the mixed-use innovation district, which is the lighter purple, and we would have the special district, which is the darker purple at the intersection. And then the plan development would remain. The, the district is unaffected by these, these zoning changes. Next slide. So this is, this is a zoning map, but we also call it a regulating plan. And what that means is that in addition to the zoning, you know, when the uses are allowed in a different, you know, the, the, the main district and the sub-district, there are, you know, there are other elements that are added. So for example, we've got a series of complete streets that we've identified, and we have four different streets that we sort of put together design standards for. Gateway Boulevards, which include Mall Road and Middlesex Turnpike. Collector Streets would be things like South Bedford Road and Wayside. The Commercial Street would be District Avenue, and a local street would be like the Leahy Access Road. So it's sort of a hierarchy of different types of streets. You know, and with those, with the, with those different types of streets, we've got design standards that integrate, you know, the, the combination of traffic, pedestrians, bicyclists. And so, you know, over time, we're hoping that, you know, this, this district overall will be well-connected, you know, both in terms of vehicles as well as pedestrians, and we can have connections between the different properties themselves. So ideally, over time, we'll, you know, you know, we can make, you know, connections, you know, road connections between the mall and the district and Leahy, so that we can disperse the traffic a little bit more and put a little bit less pressure on the Mall Road itself. There's also requirements for open space. For any development in the future, there would be required to be, there would be required open space on-site, and it'd have to be purposeful, can't be just sort of the buffer area around the property. But it's got to be some passive or active open space that can be enjoyed by, you know, the people that work in the buildings, you know, future residents, and the public themselves. So one of the big things we heard in the process was that people really want to, over time, create this Vine Brook Greenway. And so you can see the green line that heads up through the mall, from the mall over to the district, to the north side of Mall Road, of Coles and Bricksmore. And so what will happen in the future is that when the development comes forward, they have the opportunity, if they're looking to do mixed use or residential, and they want to get a higher density, they can negotiate with the Planning Board and with the town to make a contribution or make a partial improvement on their property to make that Vine Brook Greenway, you know, connect over time. So it's not just, you know, private open spaces, it's basically public open spaces that we're trying to integrate so that people that are working or living in the district and the neighborhoods around it can sort of enjoy those, those open spaces. Next.
Ted, we'll try to go through these kind of a little quicker here so we can show folks an open.
This, this is the last one, right?
Um, yes, and then I was going to go into a couple more slides to show them.
Okay. So as, you know, we're introducing mixed use and residential to the district. Again, the concentration is really at the intersection of Middlesex Turnpike and Mall Road. So mixed use in multi, and, and multifamily would be allowed in the special district, 15 units per acre by right. And then in the mixed district, it would be 15 units by special permit. There's an opportunity, though, to go up to 30 dwelling units per acre if there's a public benefit. Again, that public benefit would be related to open spaces or affordable housing above the required amount. And another thing we, we're hearing a little bit more about is trying to incentivize smaller residential units, you know, limited square footage and limited bedrooms. Again, you know, these are people that are primarily going to be working in the district, and so they, we want to make sure we get smaller units. And also in the main district, the mixed district, which is everything except for that, the Mall Road and Bricksmore and Coles, there's, you know, there's a requirement that there's got to be a balance between residential and commercial use. And so we, we put some standards in that say that there's no net loss of non-residential building space allowed. You have to maintain the ratio of building spaces there. So if, you know, if somebody want, if, what has a commercial development and they want to add residential to it, there's a 60-40 balance. And so they can actually tear down that commercial building and build a new one, but they can't, the ratio's got to be 60 commercial and 40 residential. So again, we heard some feedback in terms of making sure that in that larger area, we don't want to be, you know, overwhelmed by residential development projects. We want to maintain that balance of primarily commercial over residential.
Thanks, Ted. And if we just go to a couple more slides down after this, and the next one, so.
This one, I'll cover this. We have, real quickly, we've heard a lot of feedback from the neighbors to the north, north side of Mall Road, in terms of, you know, the, the visual, you know, you can see right through, through the backside of some of the properties and the noise. And so what we've created is what we call a transitional buffer. And so that's a 20-foot buffer, and it has to be heavily landscaped, it has to have a full fence, so that over time, as the trees grow, you know, they'll block the visibility, but also attenuate some of the, the noise as well. So we're trying to make sure that we don't have, as development happens, we, we don't have an impact on the surrounding inhabitants.
Thanks, Ted. So, you know, this is just kind of going back to a vision plan of the orange line connecting public and open spaces throughout the parcels. Those white blank spaces are currently parking lots, and that's what we're looking to guide development in. We're going to be working on enhancing this graphic so you can kind of visually see that a little better. But the zoning is intended to guide development over the 30 to 40 years. So if you can imagine, this is, you know, a place we know well, which is the mall. We've been in communication with Simon Lord &amp; Taylor Macy's, and we know that they've just invested $100 million into that mall. The mall is not going away. We have one of the high-end malls. I know Liz has done some research on, you know, lux, kind of luxury tenants and brands looking to be in places like the Burlington Mall because of our demographic, because of kind of the household incomes within the 15-minute ratings. So it's a thriving mall, but what we want to do is guide development around it over time. So if we just click through these quickly here, Caleb, the emphasis, did I just go to that too? I thought I had more. Okay, sorry. It was supposed to be slow over time, Caleb. But anyways, I thought I had a couple more in there. So the idea is, if you go back to that slide just before, Caleb.
Incrementally, if you go before that, the idea is to just incrementally, we will not see development happen immediately with the zoning change. It is a very long process, whether it's because of teneting, financing, real estate cycles, interest rates, all of those things have to kind of come to a really kind of sweet spot for development to happen in, in how we want it. But as we move forward over time, you can see that we are trying to build the public infrastructure, which is the public realm that connects these pieces, and then you can keep going, Caleb, as you build in over time, 30 years, 40 years, enhancing the greenway, enhancing public accessible spaces through this area. And that's really the goal. So with that, I think Ted and I are here to take questions, and Madam Chair, one thing maybe we talked about was, be a subcommittee or anything like that.
I, I think we're going to, we're going to want to do that, but first, I'm going to ask staff, did you have anything you wanted to add before I ask Planning Board members about questions? Okay, okay. Who wants to start? Joe, do you want to start?
No, I'm good.
No? Bill?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. Brenda?
I think we're taking on too much too soon. I think that we should be beta-testing a smaller space before consuming a larger amount of space. If you look at a SIMS report, which is basically, for those who don't know, like a basic demographic real estate report that offers typical demographics, Burlington does show a higher demographic. If you look at the current mall space, the current mall space does not offer the same retail value as what our SIMS report would offer. The gentleman on the phone stated that this could potentially reduce pressure on Mall Road. The additional use would actually contradict that initiative because we'd be, we'd be bringing more people onto Mall Road. So, and then there was another comment about being a public benefit that's open for interpretation. I'm not interested in open for interpretation. I want facts. I want statistics. I want to see what that value is, because we can't, as a board, state what the value is for public, you know, public benefit if we don't have some type of baseline. There was another comment about smaller residential spaces can be monitored about like 11 hertz square feet. Who's to say that that's not going to be, or proposed to be, an Airbnb space or subletted space, or how do we know that that's actually going to positively impact the community? So I think we, we have a lot of homework to do. And I, I appreciate the concept. I definitely think the, as a real estate professional, knowing that retail real estate is evolving exponentially. But we, again, I think we have a lot, a lot more homework to do, and I think that, you know, there is more checks and balances that need to occur before we can really go gung-ho on this initiative.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Jess?
I want to.
Okay. Ernie and Tonyanne, do either of you want to ask a question or make a comment? Ernie?
I'm sorry. Ernie, go first.
Oh, me? Okay. Uh, yes, I have two questions, actually. One was to, I'm not sure who would answer it, but where did the 60% commercial, 40% residential split come from? How, how was that arrived at?
Uh, that is based on our tax composition for the town. So currently, in terms of tax revenue.
Tax revenue, approximately 60% plus actually comes from commercial property, and then just under 40 comes from residential. So what we want to do is keep, keep that balance, because that balance helps to keep the residential property taxes low. So that commercial offsets it.
So this 60% was based on assessed value? 60-40? Or was it based on square footage?
It's based on the tax revenue.
So the actual dollars that come in, because if we're looking at value, yes, our value actually is in the residential, but because of our tax shift, our dollars come from the commercial.
You might want to clarify that for Town Meeting, because I think. 60% of the square footage of a particular parcel had to be commercial only, and 40% had to be residential. But you're saying it's based on assessed value or not square footage? Is that correct?
That's correct. So, Ernie, that is correct. Currently, we are looking for the commercial hub to remain a commercial hub. The introduction of housing is really intended to support and add more. The introduction of housing is really intended to support and add more value for the commercial over time. So what we know is, the model is live, work, play. Live, work, play is what, the direction and what we're seeing across the board. So like CBRE and those, you know, real estate entities that analyze nationwide, micro hubs that have live, work, play, all have lower vacancy, higher rents and overall better vitality. And so for the long-term sustainability and growth, that's kind of where we're trying to position ourselves.
Right, okay, understand, good. And my other question was, you say you talk to stakeholders, landowners in this area and tenants and businesses and whatever. What was, what was the biggest pushback you got from them? If you got a pushback and what did you have to adjust to allow for that or if anything, Melissa?
Thanks for asking, Ernie. We have been engaged with the majority of the property owners in Burlington. I think we've engaged primarily with the larger property owners, Simon, Macy's, Lord and Taylor, Brixmore, RJ Kelly, Gutierrez, National Development, Piedmont, Wayside, Edens, Retail Linear, to give you an example of, you know, the cross-section of property owners. And the majority of them support this initiative because it, under the current zoning, there's limited opportunity for new growth. So under this, there's additional opportunity. The pushback that we've seen from property owners is that the demand on open space is high, the elevated design may cost too much and that possibly they need a little bit more density. We had talked about a bonus for if they were to do housing, that it needed to be upwards of 60 units per acre. So those were the things that had come up in the conversation to date. And the zoning that you have before you now reflects 30 units per acre. It also still holds steady and I think we want to stay committed to our open space requirement of 30%. And our design, we want to make sure that those design standards, they're not design guidelines, they are standards, which means the expectation is that any developer that comes to town, you're going to have to give us a good, quality, well-attractive design and not some box because we're in the suburbs. And you're also going to look at where we want to see that green space and open that up. So the Vine Brook is now not going to be a gutter, but we're going to open it up and design it and contribute money to it so that it becomes an actual amenity and a greenway for us versus, you know, kind of a throwaway spot that no one looks at. But we cannot do it unless we have a cohesive strategic approach to development. And that's what we're providing here with the zoning.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Just one last thing. Melissa, that is a suggestion that when you present, especially the town meeting, you emphasize, as you just said to us, it's a 30, 40, 50-year plan.
Yeah.
This is, this is the initial. I mean, 20 years in, 10 years in, if we find it's not working, you go back to town meeting and tweak it. So it's not the end-all, be-all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. Tonyanne?
I'm okay.
Okay, I actually have a couple of questions. You guys will get a second chance.
First of all, when you mentioned 60 units per acre, that, I was going to ask you to go back to Ted's last slide, actually. Because on that, it said 15 units per acre and it looked like then there were incentives to go up to 30 acres, 30 units per acre. But if, I don't know if we can pull that up. It looked like at the 15 units per acre, we weren't getting all of the public space. Or, so it's a public space amenities, do they come in at 30 units per acre or at 15 units per acre?
The base, no, yeah, you can talk to that, Ted.
Yeah, so the open spaces are required for every new development. That's just a given. It's 25 to 30% for different types of buildings. But they can go up to 30 units per acre if they provide, you know, publicly accessible open space. Again, those are targeted for the greenway and possibly even for TRW Park because that's right on the edge of the district and it has a role benefit to the neighborhoods to the north. But in order to get the 30 units, you have to make that public benefit. Primarily open space, affordability is something we're trying to, you know, tinker with in terms of, you know, increasing the amount that's required and it, right now it's 20%. We're also looking at trying to incent of.
20% or 15%?
It's, sorry, 20%.
Sorry, 20% affordable. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and again, these are, these are things we're working with. So this is, you know.
Okay, yeah, so my question remains the same.
At 15 units per acre, are we still getting the public space amenities or is it only at 30 acres, 30 units per acre?
Not at 15. You're getting onsite.
Okay, okay, that's what I wanted to know. And the 60 units per acre, that's the first I've heard of that. And I don't think I really want to talk about it a whole lot because I don't like the idea at all. Just had to say that.
Well, for the, for the record, if I could clarify that, I think Ernie was asking me what we heard from the property owners.
Right, okay.
And we heard that they have, you know, desires for upwards of 60 units per acre.
Okay.
And through the community process, we have then adjusted it to 30 units an acre max. And that ends up being in the four to five-story range, if you have the retail.
Okay. Then going back to Ernie's question, I just want to make sure I understand, when it comes to the 60-40 commercial residential breakdown, do I understand correctly in that you're wanting to maintain, within this area, as things get built out, the idea is to maintain that ratio of 60 commercial versus 40 residential in terms of what's built out in order to, for us to maintain that same tax breakdown?
Bless you. So, yes, so what we have currently in the draft is 60% square footage to 40% square footage on a project.
Okay.
So that is true. Ernie said the 60-40 split, where is that coming from?
Okay, I understand that.
But it can't, it's hard to kind of, you have to look at it because we have the tax split, right?
Right, no, I understand that. I just wanted to see how.
For the square footage, yes.
Right, okay.
So it's predominantly commercial.
Okay. Also, within that plan, you talked a lot about connections between the properties. Are you envisioning driving connections between them without going onto Mall Road? Or is that mainly walking, biking connections?
They are walking, biking connections.
So no driving connections? Because then we still are, so we still would be directing all the traffic out onto Mall Road?
Yes, so I think if we go back to that corridor, we do have a couple connecting roads on that regulating plan. We are looking to make those connections, some vehicle connections, especially between the district and the mall. I know that the planning board has, you know, worked with the district already to start that.
Tried.
So this, this kind of then help, this would, this would be a tool to help the planning board so that you can point to the regulating plan and say, these are the connections. That's why I think, you know, having maybe the subcommittee would be great to make sure that those pieces are on this regulating plan. The regulating plan is the pink one with the green line. That can show, kind of show developers, this is where we want, and we want you to orient your, you know, your buildings and so forth. So that, what this map currently is missing and what we're working on currently is to illustrate better those pedestrian and small street connections between.
Okay, but we're not looking for vehicle connections.
There's one connection off the map.
Is there?
Between Mall and District.
Okay, the vehicle connection, which is the one we had sort of already planned for.
Yes.
Okay.
It happened in that particular place.
Okay.
The plan is seated, so we want to make sure we make that connection between Mall and District.
Okay, all right, thank you. So I know some of my other fellow members have questions. I just wanted to agree with something that Brenda said. I do think this is a lot all at once. I don't know if it's possible, but I, I think it would be easier for the town to understand and to get on board if there was some way we could identify a property owner who was ready to move more quickly. Because I know this is a project that will take decades to come to fruition, but I think it's difficult for people to envision if there was some way to work with a property owner who was ready to move more quickly, who was on board in a small scale so that we can see what it looks like when it's built out. It might be a little bit easier for us to envision how it would be when it's rolled out. Don't know if that's possible, but something I thought was worth mentioning. Joe?
So I'm, it's kind of a follow-up because I'm a little confused after hearing you talk about the square footage and the 60-40 split. You said it was based on tax revenue, but then you talk about square footage. Which one is?
Well, the, if we look at where, kind of how Burlington benefits as a resident, how you benefit is that you have a split. So the majority of your taxes come from commercial, but even though that value is smaller. So we just want to ensure that we don't lose that value on commercial. So what, instead of doing a 50-50 split on commercial and residential for project.
Square footage?
Square footage. We've put the square footage higher. So we tried to, in this overall district, say the dominant use in this district, even if we introduce housing, should be 60% square footage, commercial. That way we know, as like a guiding light, that it remains a commercial hub.
Right, and I, and I don't disagree with the concept, but I disagree with the analysis. I don't know how you come up with, you're basing it on an income of, a tax income of 60% commercial, 40% residential, but that doesn't equate to 60%, you know, commercial square footage versus 40% residential square footage. That analysis doesn't really work. That's, that's way off.
Madam Chair, if I may.
You're right, Joe.
When talking about.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind. If you're, you're addressing what Joe was talking about.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, I guess when we're talking about opportunities and what the benefits are for your typical Burlington landowner, I think, you know, what we need to look at is the effect of the residents. How, you know, when you're talking about a company like Linear, they're looking to put in residential. That's a different tax rate as opposed to somebody who is going in as a commercial user. It's kind of different, no?
So if it were Linear, say as an example.
Yeah, I'm still trying to get the answer as to how you come up with that equation of 60-40 square footage when you, when you're basing it on 60-40 tax revenue. That doesn't, that, that analysis doesn't work.
So maybe, just as an example, maybe this would help. Say it was Linear. Linear people were not really talking about doing this to you, just as an example. If you took the Linear Plaza, if they were to knock everything down and start over, they'd have to build 60% commercial and 40% residential on that piece. And the hope would be that then we would, as a town, that the tax revenue would.
No, so that's my point.
That's what I'm trying to figure out and get there.
That's my whole point. My point is that's not, that analysis is not right. Because if you do 60% commercial square footage, 40% residential square footage, that tax isn't going to be 60-40. That's not, if you took, what you need to do is analyze what the commercial versus the residential square footage is in the town right now that has now manifested itself into a 60-40 tax revenue. That's how you need to analyze it. That's, that's not even going to be close because the commercial brings in so much more.
The commercial, so I, what I, I think what I could do for the board is also bring back the kind of analysis on, on the split. Because, so currently, we have about $5.3 billion of residential value in Burlington and only $3 billion of value in commercial.
Madam Chair, if I may. Who performed this analysis?
The assessors.
Burlington assessors.
Well, they performed that. They didn't analyze the, what we're trying to come up with for a split here. They gave you. She got that information from the assessors.
Well, I mean, if you look at properties that Linear owns nationwide, it's not just a retail, you know, residential mix. There's a lot of Linear properties that are, and again, apologize for Linear because I do work in a different realm. But it's not just residential. It's not just retail. It's not just, I mean, every property is different. So I think that, you know, again, not just for the board, I think for the Burlington resident, we need to be able to demonstrate the impact, positive or negative, on how this innovation district, you know, rezoning changes things. And, and I do want to call out one thing that is not related, and I'm sorry, Madam Chair, but this has nothing to do with MBTA.
Yes, no, it doesn't.
We want to make sure that everybody knows that so that doesn't come out, come back and we don't all get phone calls.
Okay. Thank you Brenda. Joe, you wanted to go on?
To follow it forward, I think we've all talked about, over the past so many months, about the MBT, how basically the town doesn't have enough residential housing to support the commercial. This is, this equation right here is going to throw it off even further. Because you're gonna, you're gonna, you're actually going to increase the square footage of the commercial versus the residential. You're actually throwing the numbers off even more, more than we exist, than exists right now by that equation. Because you can't, again, you, you really need to evaluate how, how much square footage residential we have versus how much square footage commercial we have and go forward with that, with that plan versus using the tax revenue. You know, the tax revenue will be the tax revenue, but we have a split right now that I don't think we're looking to change that split. We're not looking to increase the commercial real estate square footage versus the residential real estate square footage. That'll throw off the employment pools, that will throw off the, the traffic, that'll throw off everything.
Madam Chair, point of clarification?
Yes, and then I think we need, I think we'd like to, I'd like to talk about the subcommittee because I think we have a lot to work and we're not going to be able to work it all out tonight. Go ahead.
So it's, Joe, it's about an organizing principle at this point. I mean, I think it's one of the policy considerations that can be adjusted, of course, and that's part of why we want the subcommittee to kind of work on the sausage-making of this zoning. But the idea is, from all we've heard through the community input and the community outreach process, that the emphasis for this corridor is on the commercial. If we switch the square footage and even make it 50-50, then you will have the likelihood of increased housing development. What we're trying to do is curb that housing piece because it's, you cannot satiate the housing developers essentially where we're located. So if you allow them to have more or you open it up without some constraint, that is what you will likely see, especially given national and state policy on housing currently. So what we're trying to do is saying, currently today, this district's entirely, it's 100% commercial with about 8 million square feet of office. We say we don't want to lose that. We want to increase the value of that 8 million square feet and we want to augment that 8 million square feet. That 8 million square feet helps to generate the amount of taxes right now that offset, it's an individual household. So our guiding principle, and that's why we have it as a guiding principle, the 60-40, ensures that the dominant construction, the dominant investment is on your commercial.
I don't, I don't disagree with the 60-40 split. I just think you need to figure out what you're talking about with that 60-40. Because you're talking about tax revenue and you're talking about square footage, you know, those are two different things.
Correct. They are.
That tax, you're talking about a 60-40 split on, on, on square footage between the residential and the commercial. And I, I think that that's, that's really not what you really should be looking at.
Okay.
So with, I, I think we have a lot to figure out.
Can I make one comment just before we get to the subcommittee?
Yes.
I hear what you both are saying and like wanting to like, we don't want to bite off more than we can chew, but I do want to caution us waiting too long, especially in this area identified, to roll out a plan like this. Towns around us right now, Redding, Bedford, Woburn, they are making it so much easier to build these type of areas now. So if we wait too long to make changes in these areas that we already are seeing some vacancies, I am concerned that we will lose potential. So I just did want to caution that.
Thank you. So.
Just one quick, could we go back to the, what we were just showing on the map there? I just have one question to clarify on that. I'm a little confused. I'm a little confused.
Yeah, but there was other, there was other notations on, so, thank you. The transition buffer zones, is that pointing to the actual buffer zone, or is that, you're trying to point to the pink area there?
The blue line.
That's created for a purpose. So, the pink area is part of the main mixed district. The blue line is that transitional buffer zone.
To protect the neighboring...
Protect the neighbors, yeah.
You can see all the closest, where exactly the, kind of the cursor is there. It's the same color as that arrow. There's a line outlining the pink.
South Bedford Street, and Laurel Hill Lane, and maybe Stony Brook, that whole neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, the buffer zone is going to be trees or something like that, because it's going to only be, it looks like maybe a street.
Yes.
Twenty-foot vegetative buffer with a solid wall as well.
Oh, that's what you're talking about? Okay, good. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, so, who wants to be on the subcommittee?
Probably a lot of people. I've been on the working groups, I would like to continue to be a part of it.
Okay. Jess, someone else? Joe, you seem to have some voting.
If I had the time, I would love to, I just don't have the time, so.
Are these meetings at night, or are they in daytime?
We can make accommodations.
Okay. Does that change anything for anybody? No? Okay. Who wants to be on it with?
I can rotate with somebody, but between the High School Committee...
Oh, you're on High School?
Economic Development.
Bill?
Okay.
On MBT.
Well, Bill's also on Fox Hill.
He's also on Fox Hill.
Why don't, why don't we say, unless Tony and or Ernie wants to jump in, I'm going to say Jess and the two of us, and maybe not all three of us will be at every meeting, we'll try.
At least one of us will be there.
Yeah. Does that sound good?
It does. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Yes, please, Ernie.
Madam Chair, can you just make sure that when the meeting numbers come up, the door opens for 20 minutes?
Yes, yes.
Yes, please.
Those of us who might want to attend on occasion, good, thank you.
Absolutely. And are they ever remote, are they hybrid?
Yes, we can make them hybrid meetings. That would be helpful.
Group meetings that have been online. We started to have a precinct meeting, as well as, we met also with the Land Use Committee in the same effort to share. And I also provided the planning board with Article 14. So, in there, you can actually, on the second page even, reference on page three, transitional buffers, and kind of see what that's, what that looks like. It's a little bit different, that it gives you more graphic orientation for the zoning to help explain it. Bless you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Melissa. And hybrid would definitely help, so you can, I guess you'll let staff know about meetings, and we'll inform everyone on the board.
And Melissa, I just want to take this off, I think you've been phenomenal. Like, you've been so active in generating business and looking at new ideas in the town. I just feel like, since you've been on board, it's been a whole, you've really gone along, we've gone a long way when it comes to commercial.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Joe, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Melissa. Okay, moving on, our next discussion item is the Fox Hill project update from the Burlington School Department.
We have two spots over here with microphones, but somebody else wants to sit in that third over there. Have it all set up. Be able to share. Have access to it.
Welcome. If you could not only state your names for the record, but also introduce any other members of your team who are here?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you. We're actually really excited. We have quite an audience tonight with, I'm Donna Denisco with Denisco Design.
Bob Kuner from the School Department.
Steve Brown with Dorn Whittier, Owners Project Manager.
And then, in the audience and virtually, Vivian Lowe, Principal with Denisco, Neil Harrigan, who's Associate and Project Manager with Denisco. We have Jeremy Brooke, who many of you may know, School Committee, Park and Rec, Planning Board Rep. He's probably at Fox Hill. And then, online, I believe Dr. Conti, oh, I'm sorry, Melissa snuck in. I am sorry, Melissa. So, we have Melissa Massardo, who's School Committee Rep, as well as the Fox Hill Chair, Fox Hill School Building Committee Chair. And we also have Dr. Conti, Superintendent Conti, online. I think he's still online.
Yeah, she's also seen on that screen, but he's, if we scroll down, he's there.
Okay. And Andrea O'Toole as well, so, from Dorn Whittier, the Owners Project Manager as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to see if I can just go full screen. See if that's, does that work? There we go. Before you, we also brought handouts for everyone, and I apologize for the members, the board members that are online.
We can email them.
We'll make them available to you, so thank you. So, we're really excited to be where we are with the project. Just a quick overview and the timeline. We have, I guess first I'd like to say, just to recognize, this is a project in association or partnering with Mass School Building Authority. So, we are committed to going along their timelines. There are certain requirements that we have to meet through them, there are certain board hearings that we have to go through. So, our timeline is really designed around their requirements. We had the preferred schematic report, or study is another way of saying it, and that was approved by the MSBA and submitted for February, so they, we reviewed with them, and also Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which is also an important consideration in all of this, they sit on the board with MSBA. So, DESI and the MSBA supported the educational program, the organization of the building, the location of the building, for us to move forward into schematic design. So, since February, we've been working with, on the schematic design of the project. Our goal is to submit the schematic design to MSBA at the end of June. They will then review our submission, and they will have a board meeting at the end of August to vote us to move forward with the project. And at that point, a project funding agreement and project scope and budget agreement will be in place with the town, with the exact amount that they will be participating with, or their share of the project. And after that, we will be seeking local funding after the board approves the vote in August. And once we have the funding from the town, we'll then enter into the detailed design of the project. I'll go a little bit more in-depth here. So, where we are with the support and approval of MSBA is that the new school will be two stories, 91,000 square feet. It will have 325 students, grades K through 5. In addition to that, there'll be the Lab Collaborative Students and one of the district-wide special education programs, the DSC2. Will have at least 125 parking spaces, we'll show you that in a minute. And the other important component, as we started looking at placement of the building and understanding the best location, is that the existing building needs to remain in operation while the new school is built. So, as I mentioned, the milestones and design phases, we're in schematic design, completing at the end of June. MSBA will meet to approve the project at the end of August. And once we receive local funding, we'll start design development, anticipating October. That will take us through March of 2025. Through that process, we'll be submitting our design development package to the planning board for a site plan approval, notice of intent to conservation, as we wrap up design development. Construction documents would take us through December of 2025, and we're looking to bid the project over the winter, with construction starting in the spring of '26. We'll complete the building in the spring of '28, move the students in, and then finish the site work to be completed by fall of '28. So, the students would start their 2028 school year in the new building. Some other important project details, there's a lag, but... That's weird. No, it doesn't like it. That's weird. There, did it just keep going?
It's showing on our, it's showing on WebEx.
It's showing on WebEx, but not here.
So, is it a, well, no, you guys need to see it.
They have it front of them, so it'll keep going.
Okay, all right, great. So, the next slide is the, other, other project considerations, is the sustainability aspects of the project, and we're really excited that this will be a lead project, and we're targeting gold certification. The Building Committee has also supported and voted to be an all-electric building. It will include ground source heat pumps, are also known as geothermal wells. And the distribution system inside the building will be fan coil units, which is, has been fully vetted with the School Department for ease of use and operation. We anticipate that there'll be solar panels on the roof, and there's conversation about potential solar panels in the parking lot for canopies, so that this could actually be a true net-zero building. And then, we're continuing conversations for rainwater harvesting, because there are implications to the ecosystem with that. So, we're further studying that right now. So, where we are with the project, this is the overall project, so you're seeing the final completed site, and we're going to walk you through how we arrived here. But the site will, so I guess the overall site, we're talking about, oh, you can see my mouse. Okay, great. Maintaining the Fox Hill and Westwood roads, changing it to circle, traffic circle, and then we'll walk you through the circulation on-site, but the new school will be located to the north of the existing building. We have some wetlands to the north of that, that we actually are excited about using for outdoor learning opportunities. We'll enhance the recreation fields on-site, but also be respectful to the wetlands in the Vernal Pool to the south. So, when we started looking at this, the site impacts and considerations of the development, it's actually locating the building where it currently is placed on the site, is where the existing parking lot is. So, there'll be limited disruption, except you'll see in the red hatched areas, that would be selective tree removals to the northeast of the, where the new school will go. The new school will be approximately 370 feet from the 200-foot buffer of the Vernal Pool. And then, the proposed building construction will, as I said, occur at the existing parking lot, which will be about 65 feet away from the occupied building, which was an important consideration as well. There's approximately four feet of unsuitable soils that must be removed within the building footprint. We've already made and anticipated these, as we'll be getting our costs, so it's really good to understand these conditions early on, and that...
What does that mean?
Unsuitable soil, so you can't build a building on it. The soils don't support it. So, we have to remove the four feet and bring in proper fill.
Is it like soil testing done? It's sinking, is that...
Yeah, yeah, like the soils don't, won't support the structure.
Okay.
Yes, sorry.
It's not toxic, right?
No, no, sorry, sorry. Yes, yes. We will say that we have found no toxic, we have found no toxic soils, which is not uncommon in a lot of communities, but no, no, this is just, it doesn't support the structure, the building structure. Yes, thank you.
Suitable is criticism for something awful.
No, no, it just can't support the structure. Yeah, but thank you for the clarification, because others may have the same understanding as that. There's some relatively high water table at the traffic circle, which we can easily mitigate. And then, the other nice aspect is, it's a relatively flat development area. So, again, always keeping in mind on cost and impacts to construction. So, I actually should have said this earlier, I, we really, all of us, want to thank Bill Gaffney for his volunteering to be the person from the planning board, to be involved in this project. We've gotten to know Bill very well, I don't know how many meetings he's sat in on for the past couple of months, so thank you. And his input has been very, very helpful, thoughtful, looking at things different ways than we would normally look at things. So, really, we just want to say thank you for your effort and your continued effort on this, Bill. Where we've landed as of, is that only yesterday? Only yesterday? Is that we have had many, many different conversations and iterations on how we're going to manage the traffic on-site. We have parent drop-off, that would be the arrows in blue. We have van drop-off, which would be for special education students requiring van arrival and departure. And then, we also have buses. And so, our goal was to make sure that we had clear separation of all three vehicle types, because they all have nuances, some require longer times, parents are more in a rush, and so we were trying to minimize the cross-sections of the two or three. So, what we've arrived at, and we've also had the Police Department also involved, Fire Department has been involved, so, first responders involved, as we've looked at all of the different ways that we can reduce the cross-sections of all of the various traffic that would occur. So, everyone has agreed that a traffic circle is a great addition, as opposed to the intersection that currently exists, the two, really two-way intersection or three-way. We'll have calming, traffic calming measures, so at, we'll have raised tra, oh, and safe routes to school has also been very, very involved. So, it's great to have everyone be at these meetings to arrive at solutions that everyone can agree to. So, we have traffic calming measures, that will be the raised tables at the intersection of Westwood. We have also a consideration of having that on Fox Hill as well, so that it will slow cars down, even though going through a traffic circle, it really does reduce the speeds, but this will actually even get them to stop a little bit more. You're seeing here a bunch of stop signs. We haven't fully thought this out, planned it all out, we just arrived at this yesterday. So, we will be working with the town to understand exactly where all of the stop signs should go, the yield signs, the, there's conversations about no dog signs, like, there's a lot of things that aren't on the site, but this will give you an idea of the traffic flow. So, we have parents coming in that are in blue. They will come to the, around the parking lot and arrive at the parent drop-off area. You'll see two red arrows, one will take you to the gym, and we'll get to that in a minute, but also the main entry point, which is the red arrow in the middle. This line, the queue line, is approximately what you have now, it's 1,000 linear feet, which will be for 50 cars, and that only takes you to the P in the parent. That doesn't include additional drop-off, should it ever be needed, to come down what we're calling kind of the promenade down the middle. The magenta or purple is for the van drop-off, that they will come in, they'll have their own lane, and that they'll be able to cross and enter into the other loop that will come around to the front of the building as well. They'll be able to enter the main entry, and the elevator will be right there. We're also having canopies or areas that will be covered for everyone that enters into the building. The other aspect... The other aspect are the buses, anticipating approximately seven buses. So we'll have the buses with a dedicated bus drop-off loop that will be to the west of the new building. We don't want to say it's a side entrance. It's going to be the second front entrance. It will be designed to be bright and light and welcoming, just like the main entrance. There'll be a canopy for arriving students in inclement weather, and that those buses will be able to load and unload, and the students will enter the new school into the academic or classroom wing, because those students go directly to their classrooms. So this all works out really well. So we really have three phases. We have the entry to the west, which is where the bus drop-offs will be, the main entry, which is this kind of nice promenade that will take you directly into the building. And then the third one, the third arrow that you'll see is kind of the third one, which is kind of a community access entry, that the communal... Access to the community use spaces that will be to the right of the entire building. And so locating the parking there with handicap parking is a great opportunity and easy access into the school. Oh, I did what I didn't tell you. Hi. I couldn't talk about here. We will be having approximately 112 parking spaces in the main parking lot and 15 that are off of the bus drop-off area, so that we have right now, we're showing 127 parking spaces. And we've talked with the school department on which staff makes the most sense to be in the back, kitchen, custodians, even principal, those that will be there throughout the duration of the day. So when we look at the site overall, what you'll see here is we... Is this the right slide? Did I miss one? No. I have to go... I went the wrong way. Sorry. Is this where we are? Fields? Okay. So we've also met with Park and Rec Department, and there we had the soccer association also expressed their desires, as well as lacrosse. So it was open to everyone. Those two associations did show up and voice their opinion and desires in how this development could really benefit their programs. So what we did hear was that the high school softball teams, if we can't have JV and varsity simultaneously on one site, that they really didn't want to split the two, because they travel in pairs. So they said, "Thank you. We're good." So everyone landed on having one multipurpose field that would actually serve full lacrosse games. It can be divisible, if you can see... I think it shows up better in your Ando, that it's divisible into three U-10 soccer fields. And then there's actually another benefit or feature is to have a nice walking path around the perimeter of the fields, but it's also accessible. We have to provide accessible paths to the fields. In addition to the fields, you'll see what's kind of like a teardrop. It says playground on it, the purple. That will be a board-in-place soft foundation that will have your actual equipment on it. We're really excited about the equipment. It will be an accessible, fully accessible structures. There's multiple pieces and components to it. That will be about 9,000 square feet. And then what you're looking at in like the beige, that will be hard surface for play, so that students during wintery months, even in April, they won't have to go to the fields, but they'll be able to play on the hard surface. The one other thing I did not point out, you'll see there's like a red... Two red lines that kind of look like shape of a road. We will have full access around the building for emergency access. So after a lot of conversation with school department, and we have a exterior site working group, and Bill serves on that committee, is that there was a desire for the school to have like a kickball field up by the playground. They actually utilize that during gym and also for recreation. So we've massaged the play areas or the fields, so that we have a kickball field in the upper corner. You'll see lines, but there actually won't be fences or anything. That's just to demonstrate that the... That it will fit properly. We'll have a fence behind it, so that we don't have errant balls. But you'll see that we're able to still maintain a full-size lacrosse field, and then there are three U-10 fields. So this is where we've landed. I think that too is as of yesterday. It's been a long, long week. So some other features that we're really excited about are potential outdoor learning areas. You have an amazing site. You have areas that... Taking advantage of the wetlands, we're looking at... Looking at learning laboratories, you'll see in the green, number one, nature-inspired play. And then, of course, your vernal pool and your wetlands to the south. So we really look forward to enhancing and inspiring the staff and students to take advantage of your amazing site. And then without going through all of this, but you'll see that these are the ideas that we're thinking about for each of the different areas, to help you envision what that may look like, from traditional learning and nature classroom to the walking trails. And then, of course, the playgrounds for interactive, but yet inclusive, play and auditory. So we're really excited about all the opportunities that we have for outdoor learning. So we spent a lot of time... It's not complete yet, but we've spent a lot of time making sure that our plans will work for construction as well. So again, as I mentioned, the existing school will remain in operation, and so we have to be mindful of parent drop-off. We have to be mindful of the special education vans, as well as the buses. We have to also be mindful of the need for parking and then for a place for students to play during construction. So the main construction phase is Phase 1, obviously. The first part of Phase 1, you'll see where it says Zone... Contractor Zone Phase 1A. Our first part of this is to create temporary parking for the staff, because we'll be utilizing the staff parking lot for the new school. And then we'd also have to create a temporary play area for the students as well. We're also developing a temporary bus loop, which we actually think will enhance and support the current traffic circulation. The contractor area will be fully fenced off and separated, clear separation. There'll be measures in place to make sure that they don't... The contractor can't arrive or depart during school arrival and departure hours, and there's going to be an entire protocol for that. But what you'll see is that we can safely have the contractor construct the building while school remains in operation. So Phase 2 is once the school is complete, we'll be able to move the students into the new school. What we do want to do is maintain the temporary parking and also maintain the bus loop, but now we'll be able to use the bus loop for parent drop-off, because the new bus drop-off loop will be completed at that point in time. So we have to demolish the existing building and then finish the site for Phase 3. So once we have the parking lot established, the whole filled, the parking lot established, we'll then come in and then finish up the site and remove the temporary parking and play areas. And we're excited it's going to be here before we know it, so this will be fall of 28. We've just started talking about what is the building actually going to look like, right? We've gotten through, I think, what we feel was all the necessary steps to now we can start really thinking about how beautiful and unique this school will look like. So we've started talking about some design precedents. Just to give you an idea, this is... Our goal with all of the exterior materials is to bring in a lot of natural light, but we have to be mindful of our energy code requirements. We want this building to be here for at least 50, hopefully 75 years, so the material needs to be durable, and it also needs to be cost-effective. And you all are probably very familiar with, over time, the material... Costs of material have changed over the time. Metal panels used to be the least expensive, and that's why you see it probably in a lot of buildings, but that became so popular. So now, you know, the brick is probably the most cost-effective material. And you can do great things with brick. What you'll see here is just... We're just starting to talk about looks and feels of different buildings to get a sense of what is important to the Fox Hill group. This is a Earl Wyman School in Woburn. What you'll see is a lot of the schools that we're showing are actually three stories. You're very fortunate to have so much land that you can actually design a two-story building. This is another example, the Bancroft School in Andover. The front almost appears as a two-story building, but it's actually a three-story building. This too is prominent with brick. There's phenolic panels, aluminum, curtain wall, and then, of course, windows, which the window-to-wall ratio has changed over the years, so we have to be mindful of that. Another example, as I was saying, the metal panels used to be an affordable material for the exterior. This is another way of looking at designing the exterior of a school. We're hearing from all of the input that a more traditional school is more appropriate for the Fox Hill. Here is the Shea Memorial Elementary School in Amesbury. We have visited several of these schools as well. We've taken field trips. Where this school in the front is a two-story school, mostly brick. We have some phenolic panels that you'll see that are the... It's kind of hard to see. They're the brown going around the windows above. That's the library. And then...
Samples of buildings you've done?
Well, we've done some, and then there are others. Yeah. The Bancroft.
But we don't have any things that you've designed yet for Fox Hill, right?
Well, no. This is what we're just starting, right?
Okay.
So yeah, yeah. Thank you. No, we're just starting. So we're just trying to, while not necessarily your purview, but we want... We're seeking everyone's input on what the school could look like, right? So these are just examples, and we've just started to explore this with the building committee. So what we've heard so far is that a traditional brick is more appropriate. They really are trying to connect the inside and outside, so ideally we'll have some materials that are on the outside that we'll also bring to the inside. And all of that, we're going to be developing further for the remaining part of schematic design, but our design's going to continue through design development. So there's plenty of opportunity for fully vetting and obtaining opinions.
Great. In the interest of time...
Yep.
I think I love having this packet, and I want to spend more time with it on my own, but we don't actually have any say in what you do inside your building.
We're going to keep going.
So you don't need to talk to us about that.
Thank you.
It's not our purview.
Perfect.
It's up to the school committee.
So this was just... Will bring us to, you know, just starting to think about the massing, and we'll talk about that in one second, as this does relate to some zoning requirements. So again, just starting to think about materials, what it's going to look like on the outside, and we'll get to the fun part. So we have gone through the zoning analysis and permitting requirements, and I also should be thanking Liz and Caleb for all of the time they have been spending with us. It's been really helpful. There are two areas, Article 4 for use regulations, as well as Article 5 for the height restrictions that will be triggering, and we want to talk to you about those. So Article 4 for use regulations... Let me just see if I can move this, get this out of my way. There is a desire, it's still not 100% confirmed, but there's a desire to potentially put solar canopies in the parking lot. This would probably be through a PPA, that the town wouldn't own them. That's typically how it's done. Hasn't been fully vetted yet, but this would actually enable the school to be fully net-zero, which is really an amazing opportunity for the town of Burlington.
So quick question.
Yes.
Would that be in the front of the building or the back of the building?
It would be... I'll go back. It will be in the parking lot.
So and that would be, I guess, from the...
Right there.
Yeah. So from the perspective of the houses and the neighbors and everybody around it, I guess I'm... That's what I'm wondering, but...
Yes.
Because we do have bylaws against...
Front yard.
Front yard.
Yes. Yes. Thank you. So we actually have spoken with Mark Dupell on this to obtain his opinion and how he would be approaching the site, and he was saying he anticipates that Fox Road... Fox Hill Road will be the front yard, and that placing the canopies in the parking lot would not be considered the front yard. It would be side, but that... And he believes it would be acceptable, but with a special permit through the planning board.
Could you go back to the last slide? Sorry. Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, please.
Where the picture was of the parking lot.
Yeah. So why don't I... Let me... Maybe a site plan might be...
Well, so where you see the green there, that was a result of kind of separating the bus parking from the back, which I know a member of Pembroke, a member of the room involved, had common experiences, particularly with Marshal Simon drop-off, and keeping those separated is what I've been really hoping on. But as a result, we get that green space area basically next to the parking lot, which is an opportunity to even put landscape in there, so you wouldn't necessarily even see any of the solar from Fox Hill Road.
Yeah. Right, right in the front, kind of where the purple is.
Over here. No.
Nope. Right.
Move your finger toward me.
Left, left, yeah.
Yes. This big bag. Yeah.
So where's Fox Hill? Fox Hill Road is down this way.
So from here?
Coming up. Yep. Coming up this way.
Fox Hill, you're looking... So Westwood?
Right. Well, we only have a few sparse trees, but yes, it would be this area would be considered the front yard.
So you're looking at this one?
You come up, yeah. So you could have all this area here, landscape.
Yeah. That's what Mark was... That's what Mark was saying yesterday.
Is it beneficial?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. And of course, it would require a special permit. We still have to actually work it all out, but... And that does not need to be decided today or even before the end of schematic design, right? Our goal is to make this just an amazing opportunity to have a net-zero school. The other Article 4 concern is the storage of oils and fuel or petroleum in a residential zone. So other partners in this project are... Is MassSave, and if you're familiar with MassSave and their incentives. MassSave is offering communities significant funds to utilize ground source heat pumps and be all-electric. In order to do that, they have certain requirements, and it's actually through DOE R that is kind of putting the restrictions on these, that gases... Gas use is prohibited for the project. So even though you have gas on-site, the building will be all-electric, and they're telling us that we cannot even use... The backup generator cannot use gas either. So we've started conversations, as you heard earlier, we... There was a rush to get something into town meeting, so we apologize for jumping the gun. But in conversations that we've... But in conversations that we've been having, that we think that there might be a path forward and discussions with the town to maybe have a text amendment to the zoning that would allow for accessory use of public buildings for, in, in order for us to be able to use a gas, a diesel generator in lieu of a gas generator because it's in the residential zone.
So if I understand this correctly, this would be for residential property that is being used by the town. So it's town property that is zone residential, only that, not other residential properties could have diesel. That's what you're proposing?
Correct, correct, correct.
Can I just call that?
Yes.
So I was thinking about this one a bit and thank you again. I think that the, the whole entire project team has done a great job of this and I want to really give a shout-out to the folks that are with the school department as well, particularly Kristen Downey, right, she really contributed as well as everybody else that's part of the project team, so thank you. I thought about this one a little bit. So the idea for a diesel backup generator is for the geothermal pump, is that correct?
So the, the generator itself is obviously if there's a power outage in the school, so that we're able to provide life safety items within the building to function, as well as some other ones, so that, you know, you're, you're heating the building a little bit so that you're protecting your asset and to, to make sure that your freezers and coolers in, in the kitchen don't go bad, right? We've all been there recently. So it, it's just really, it's for emergency backup to, to put certain items within the building to continue to have power.
Is there a certain timeframe where they have to, you have to have that emergency backup for? Like for example, how big do you have to have your diesel generator for? How many hours?
Yeah, so we've been working with school department and determining, you know, what, what is an appropriate duration and some of that does depend on how much goes on the emergency generator, so we're still kind of massaging all of that, but I think the goal is to have it for 24 or 48 hours for, for the, maybe I might-
If I may. There are certain aspects of the building that require more than 24 to 48, 48 hours. So for instance, in a catastrophic situation where we may lose power for a week, the bigger issue is if you have sprinkler pipes that freeze and if you have plumbing piping, you know, all the, all the piping in the building may freeze. So that's really kind of, you can't put, you know, 24 hours, 48 hours on that, we don't really know. So we want to protect, as Donna says, the asset that you've, you know, we are spending quite a bit of money and it's to last for many years. So that's the intent and, and also for the life safety. So not only would it be for emergency lighting, but it's also for the network system as well, so that also impacts your doors, your security, all, all of those basically fold into the generator.
But I think to your question was for how long?
Yeah.
Yeah, so where I'm kind of thinking of this is, is we're thinking solar on the top, we're thinking solar on the, on the parking lot potentially and now you're doing a, a geothermal heat pump for the heat, right? You're not doing anything from electric standpoint there, you're not, you're not using any sort of steam to electric, I'm guessing?
No, so, so the geothermal is, is the, it's the energy that's being brought in to the building and then the fan coils are the, is the equipment that will be distributing it-
For heat.
But for heat, but it will be electric.
Yeah, but you're not generating electricity from it, right?
No, no, no. So we're just bringing-
I had a recent trip where it was a lot of geothermal that converts, the geothermal's electric. So my, my point here is that you've got maybe a potential for solar to go to batteries, if you've, everyone's heard about this recently, that you can store, right?
Yes.
And then what happens when the sun comes back out?
Yeah.
After, after the event, then those, the batteries get recharged again. So have you looked at that at all?
Yeah, so right now, batteries are not permitted by code to be for life safety.
For life safety?
For, for the life safety aspects of the building, so-
Which would be?
It's all the lighting.
Light?
It would be the lighting, perhaps an elevator, it would be for all of the security because everything's electronic now with the card readers, so if the power goes out, your, your building is open. So, but that's not to say it's not going to change over time, right? And, and batteries are becoming more affordable and, and it's changing.
Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I think Member, Member Cavino had his hand up. Did you want to ask a question, Ernie?
Yeah, a point of clarification from the staff. I know that we have various sewer pumping stations all around town, some are located in residential areas, they all have generators, how do we handle that? Are they rezoned?
So, no, that's a, that's a great question, Ernie. So the sewer pump stations, they do all have diesel generators and they are considered emergency equipment, so they, you know, they get a variance from the state for being, you know, emergency safety for, for people's health and safety.
Yeah, how do they fit into our zoning bylaw? Are they, are they-
Oh, they, well, they, so they don't fit into our zoning bylaw because we don't allow-
So we, we do allow them, but we don't allow them, is what you're saying?
So we do, we, we, the state allows them because they're emergency infrastructure. Our zoning bylaw doesn't allow them, but the state is, overrules us essentially.
So the state overrides our zoning in that particular case?
Exactly.
Could they also override zoning in this case? But this is public safety also.
Are you asking if they do?
Oh, well, I don't know, someone should look into that.
The consultant is shaking her head no, Ernie, you probably can't see that, sorry. Yeah, I wish, I wish, I wish it would be that simple. The, the interesting thing is that it is the Department of Energy Resources that's putting this restriction and we've had many problems with them, but yet they're saying that, that you do not necessarily require diesel. You only require diesel if you want to take advantage of the MassSave incentive, which is a price of $1.3 million. It's 1.3 million.
Thanks.
Significant.
Okay, then just, just, just another point to my fellow members and, and, and planning staff, we have long, long, long talked about a special zone for municipal used buildings or municipally owned land. So again, we get hit in the back of the head, but okay, sorry.
Okay, thank you, Ernie. Before we move on. I want to, one of the things I really want to talk to you about tonight, and we're kind of getting into this realm, is, is the scheduling of all of this, because you're not actually before us for a special permit, I mean for a site plan. So we don't want to actually talk about site plan things tonight and yet I know you're working with MSBA and you have to give them some site plan. So I'm trying to figure out when is it appropriate for us to get involved in that true site plan part of the project, because on one hand, it doesn't make sense for us to do it if town meeting hasn't given approval and we don't know if the project's going to happen. On the other hand, we don't want to come in after you get everything approved by MSBA and then we can't make changes. So can you explain to me how that works?
Sure, sure. Tonight really is just an update-
Yes.
And just letting you know that we're having these conversations and we for, let me see, the solar canopies, the diesel, like we're just going to own a diesel, we're going to own a generator right now, it doesn't, we, it doesn't matter if it's gas or diesel at this point, right? Dimensional requirements, we know that we'll, we'll be having to request a waiver. So we just want to be having these conversations now. Site plan approval will occur once we do have final approval from MSBA and the town has voted, so in the fall.
And what I want to make sure of is that when you come to us for site plan, we are not going to be completely, we're not, our hands won't be tied by a plan that's already been approved by MSBA.
The, the only, out of all of the permitting requirements is the dimensional requirements, is the height.
The height of the building.
The height of the building.
So, okay, it's my understanding from chatting with staff that the positioning of the building, once you go through that process with MSBA and assuming it gets approved by town meeting, that then when you come to us for site plan, everything is in, is in fair play except for the placement of the building. Am I correct in that understanding?
Yeah, so what is fixed?
Yes.
The size, the shape, the configuration, the height-
Of the building.
Of, of the, location of the building.
Okay.
And so-
And the rest of it can all be tweaked?
Tweak, yes, tweaked. I mean, that's why we've been asking to have someone, someone be part of the conversation now, so that there aren't radical changes afterwards, but yes.
May we ask for somebody to be part of that conversation, not the other way around? Just one-
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Totally fair.
That's a little bit backwards.
Yeah, thank you.
So Madam Chair, if I may, so if we're saying the size, the shape, the configuration, those are things we should be talking about and anything furthermore should be going through our representative.
Yes.
And it has.
It'll be great.
They're doing a great job. Everything else should be left for the site plan once town meeting approves, because otherwise we're wasting their time and ours to discuss things that may not be. I also have a couple of questions about town meeting. So you're going to go to town meeting in September, that will be after you receive information from MSBA about how much they are contributing to the project. When you go to town meeting, you're looking for funding for the project in its entirety, but with the understanding that MSBA will contribute a certain amount, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. What do you need from town meeting? Is that a 51%?
Right now, as I understand it, there's, the Ways and Means Committee was making a recommendation to the select board on how they would want to proceed with that, so-
The select board can decide if it has to be 51% or two-thirds?
Or the select board or town meeting.
My understanding is that town meeting would have to pass a two-thirds majority.
Oh, really?
Bonded.
Oh, because it's bonded?
Bonded.
Okay, I didn't understand that, thank you. Okay, so after that happens, if it passes town meeting, then you'd come back to us probably in October to start site plan?
We'll start design development and it will be in the spring.
Okay, so we wouldn't see you after that it's approved by town meeting, we would see you next early, probably winter or early spring?
Right. Because you, it has to, the, the, the plan needs to be developed, correct? To, to bring it before you, just like we have to bring for, just like Conservation Commission.
Spring, 2025. I'm just trying to get an idea of what our timeline is and where we come into the process. It's really important that you have Bill there, thank you, Bill, but I just wanted to make sure that we understand that part. So like Brenda said, and for, for right now, what we need to concern ourselves with is the, the building itself, the dimensions, the positioning of the building, because that's the part that we won't be able to change later.
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I though clarify something with the timeline?
Yes.
So I do see in here that you have, you would come before us in the spring, i.e. March, April, 2025. Is the expectation, like what's the expectation of how long this takes? Like two meetings, three meetings?
So for us, every community is different and depending on each board and what the questions and asking us to make adjustments, same thing with Conservation Commission, we'll be having to go before them. So our goal is to have everything developed and if we need to start coming earlier, because it's a longer process, that's, that's great to know and working with your staff, that will be great to know, so we start that earlier.
Yeah, I was going to say my recommendation would be there's like an interim check-in, especially because if the same thing repeats next year that happened this year, March, our meetings were hours.
Preparing for a town meeting.
Preparing for May town meeting. So I am concerned around that March-ish timeframe, so I would think about starting earlier and allowing for that to happen.
Okay, thank you.
Because then I see you jump right to construction documents.
Especially if they have, excuse me, Madam Chair, through the chair, especially if you have to do additional due diligence and meet with other partners and stakeholders, you may not get those answers within that two-week timeframe. So if you get that approval in town meeting and then have to go and do continued research or whatnot, you'll have that additional time. So and, and to your point, our last couple of meetings were pretty intense.
So in a nutshell, we should start in January.
Yeah. And we're, we're happy, we're, we're happy to do it. We, we have it, different, different communities with different other agenda items, we totally understand it.
We don't want to be the board that's holding you up, so we want to start early enough that we can have the time to do it properly and still be within the timeline that you're hoping to-
Yeah, thank you. No, we appreciate it and we're happy to start as early as tonight, recognize it's not appropriate, but yes.
So I'm sure that board members have questions, so I'm going to start Donna's end this time, Jess.
Yes, well, that was certainly my one question around the timing, that was a big one. The other one I had on the sustainability pieces, will all of this, like, because you have further study for rainwater harvesting, potential for solar, will that all be understood before this fall town meeting? Because some of that work would be incremental money.
So we know it's going to be in all-electric and we know it's going to include ground source heat pumps. We know, we'll know what the cost is. We are anticipating getting additional funds from the IRA, right? Which will also contribute to the offset, the ground source heat pumps. What we won't know is the MassSave incentive, because we, that will be kind of on the side, depending on if it's a diesel generator or not. The PV roof system, we will be able to have kind of a idea of how much energy the roof system and the canopies would produce. If not exactly at that time, but certainly thereafter, working with the school departments, preferred PPA for the panels, yeah. And then, and then the rainwater harvesting, we're just continuing to study that.
The panels over the parking lot would require a special permit, so you should probably, when you're assessing how much energy you're going to gain from them and the, and that you might get money based on that, you should work it in, because that's not a done deal. I mean, I, I don't anticipate there being a problem, but we can't promise that.
No, thank you. And at minimum, what we do is we at least provide the infrastructure so that-
Can be-
You can come back later and do it, right? So, but, but we should be able to demonstrate the cost benefit analysis, that, you know, the PPA, if you have the solar panels, this is how many you would need to make the building a net zero building.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Jess, go ahead.
No, it's okay. I saw the bike racks, which is very exciting, happy to see some bike storage, but what I don't see is, are the bikes merging with traffic?
No, thank you. Well, at one point. So if we go to page seven, the way the pedestrian access will be is the sidewalk from Fox Hill Road, the sidewalk's on the left hand side of the street, so as it currently is, we would have them come up and then kind of go counterclockwise along the traffic circle. There'll be a crossing guard and stopping vehicles at Westwood and then they would cross over and there would be another person at the bus drop-off as a control point and then the students would be able to enter the building where the buses are dropped off. So there would be two-
Like shared pedestrian bike?
It's all shared pedestrian bike, yes. We're not having a separate bike lane, the roads don't support it at Fox Hill or on Westwood.
Okay.
And there are also little kids who probably shouldn't be on the street.
What about, excuse me, what about from Vincent?
Is, many of the kids from Donald and Vincent walk to school and if they were going to ride their bikes, is there going to be somebody there for them? ride their bikes, is there going to be somebody there for them?
Are you crossing guards?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, yes, there, that wouldn't change. There are currently crossing guards there for them now, and that wouldn't change.
If you look at the south center of that rotary, there is no crossing guard, right? Here, right here, on the south side, on the Fox Hill Road.
On Fox Hill Road, which is, I'm sorry?
It's on the back.
No, 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 I understand, but Donald...
But Donald and Vincent are going to go merge into, Donald will merge into Fox Hill in that area, no?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they cross across.
So, there's some, there's a crossing.
There's a crossing guard further down.
I think further down here.
Further down. You don't think that there's going to be one at the rotary?
Yes, they're going to go into the school.
So, there would be, that's a sidewalk over there.
No, I understand that, but if they're coming up this way and there's traffic going east, right?
Then they would, they would go over here.
There would be, there would be...
They have to walk out of the way and then go around.
So, if you're coming from Donald down here off of Fox Hill, you'd be going north.
North, yeah, right. And then you have to go left.
You have to follow the sidewalk. You follow the sidewalk, as they currently would be now. So, we would have a crossing guard?
I see.
Where they would cross, so to follow the sidewalk. And we've had conversations about children or parents not following what is required.
That never happens.
So, so, you know, just trying to make sure, and Kristin from the school has been, I mean, she could tell you how many students, when they arrive, and the names of every student. So, she's been very helpful in understanding and helping us arrive at a safe solution for everyone.
Okay, Jess, I'm sorry, a couple more.
Yeah.
Oh, no, go ahead. Still with the bike racks, though. Obviously, I know we don't have design and all that stuff. I would just want to make sure that area is as well covered and also very secure.
For the bike racks? Yep, thank you. We'll probably have them in several locations as well, so that they can also be utilized for the community, so maybe some down by the play area.
Because it just seems like in an area that's like very easy to grab one and run.
Sure, we can put bike racks and maybe place them under the canopies.
Okay.
For covered.
And then for parking, will there be EV?
Yes, we will have to, well, we will have the infrastructure for EV as a requirement.
Do we know how long each phase is, these construction phases?
So, the first phase, let me see if we have the timeline. The first phase would be from spring of '26 to probably spring of, that's okay, we don't say it here, right?
So, phase one is construction start?
Yes. So, phase one would be spring of '26, and then that the longest duration is, of course, the construction of the building. We would move the students in by the summer, so they would complete their school year in the spring of '28. We'd move them in that summer.
Phase two is spring '28.
Phase two would be once school is out in '28, so June of '28. Like, we can start some of the work, but, and then phase three would be in the fall of '28.
Thank you. We can talk about fencing as that gets closer. With the Shea Memorial Elementary School, one thing that I did really love, and I know you had mentioned one of the great things about this area is that it is flat, but as we've seen in the past couple of years, we're getting so much excessive rainfall. I do love with the Shea Memorial Elementary School, how they do have almost like a front area where water can gather when there's a ton of water. Is there anything you all are planning with that? Because sometimes flat actually isn't good.
So, the green area that we're saying is the front yard, we're anticipating utilizing that for bioretention swales. That could look natural and beautiful like the Shea.
That would pull the water away from the school.
That would pull the water in, yep. We'd slope it, and it would hold it and then dissipate. So, it would be, instead of having to put chambers underground, that we'll be able to use the natural landscape for it. Yeah, thank you.
These are things we can do at the site plan today.
Well, depending where the school is, that can impact where the water gathers, so that's why I was curious about that.
We've already started thinking about that, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brenda. I, it's a simple design question, and it's only just being a concerned mom from a Fox, a concerned Fox Hill parent. I just, again, designed motion lighting in the parking lot.
I'm sorry.
Motion lighting?
Motion lighting in the parking lot or some type of lighting, leaving your parent-teacher conference and almost falling into a ditch on numerous occasions. Maybe I'm a klutz, maybe there's bad lighting, could be a combination.
We will definitely have, we'll definitely have lighting in the parking lot.
Thank you. That's all. Everything else can be addressed once it gets approved.
Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just my question again, I'll go back to geothermal. Looks like you have 80 or so wells for the geothermal. Has there been any test sites driven to see if actual geothermal was feasible in that area?
Yeah, so, so we only have 79 to go, because we've already done one. So, we did it in February. God, that seems like forever ago, too. So, we have tested it, and it's certainly viable, so we're obtaining all the information to determine, really, the quantity, how many we actually need for the 90,000 square foot building.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Joe?
Hey.
Ernie, did you want to ask any other questions?
Uh, no, well, yeah, I would ask them to follow up on Bill's suggestion of geothermal to electric, electric for the generator type thing, and really look into that and maybe solve a couple of problems at the same time. But that's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ernie. Toni Anne?
I'm all set. Every, the questions I was thinking of have been answered.
Okay, same here. I guess then the only question is, are you going to be back before us, before you get your decision from MSBA, or will we not see you until after town meeting votes?
At your pleasure. We'd be happy to be back.
Well, I'm thinking, I'm not sure it makes sense until town meeting actually takes its vote.
Sure.
Okay, does that, everyone feel good about that?
It makes some sense.
Bill, you're not off the hook.
Yeah, just the only comment, and kind of bringing it back to the overall timeline, is that this phase of the MSBA's project, the process is to nail down the scope, the schedule, and the budget. So, like Donna said, we don't want to burden you with extra information. Time is certainly of the essence, but is also limited. So, unless you think there's some feedback that the board might want to give to the project, whether in a public forum, or with Bill, or some other representation at a working group, that might impact costs specifically prior to site plan approval, that might be valuable, but maybe just having Bill's representation in the interim to kind of guide us if we think we're out of bounds anywhere, or that we might need some guidance from the rest of the board.
I know staff attends as well, so it's a...
Yeah, I think we're covered between staff and Bill, but thank you. Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Did you have any questions for us?
Not, every question we have, we have gotten the answers, and it's been wonderful. Mark, and Liz, and Caleb, and of course, Bill. So, no, it's been great, and we appreciate your joining our team. It's been very helpful.
I, I...
At your request, but it's been very helpful.
It's a great, it's a great group. I've worked together, great, different views on things, and everyone's well-respected, so it's really a pleasure to attend. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Great to hear. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you.
Okay. Would you like us to leave this?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Next on our agenda is Matters of Appointments. Item 7A is a discussion, request for approval of a minor engineering change, 29 Burlington Mall Road. Beth Israel Leahy Health is the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Thanks for your patience.
Yeah. I feel a little unworthy of being here after those two prior, all I'm looking is getting a couple of new gates approved, so, but thank you for having us here. For the record attorney, Mark Vaughn with Reema Bronstein, representing the applicant, Leahy Clinic, Leahy Medical Center. Ed Bortone, who is with Leahy here tonight, he is the Executive Director of Infrastructure and Support Operations for Leahy. Have Carlton Quinn with me here with Allen &amp; Major, the engineering firm of record for the project. He's pinch hitting for Tim Williams at Allen &amp; Major, I think some of you have seen before, and also Candace Barter, who is with E4 Architects. So, is it 29 Mall Road that you?
Yes, 29 Mall Road first, yep.
Okay, great. You know, we have kind of two most companion minor engineering change applications here, but...
Before you move on, is there, is there anyone here from Leahy Clinic?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you, okay. I missed that. I was struggling with my sweater, so.
That's all right, yeah.
Thank you.
So, we're here for some very minor modifications that are proposed to the first application, being 29 Burlington Mall Road, which is the property located at the corner of 29 Mall Road and South Bedford Street. So, this is a building there that's occupied by Leahy for administrative office purposes, neurology. You also have a portion of a medical school that's in there as well. So, currently, this site is controlled today with gates at the entrance that's off of Mall Road. When you come in, there's a driveway that is kind of shared with 29 Mall Road and 31 Mall Road, and then also the property has access onto South Bedford Street via gates as well. The gates, of course, being there to control and manage parking for administrative staff and also for patients and visitors to the building. So, one of the issues with the current gate location, the one that's up near Mall Road, if you can kind of scroll down again, is that it's presently located very close to the driveway, and it results in some queuing every now and then if one or two vehicles are there, or someone's struggling to get in or whatnot, and it can impact the driveway that's shared with 31. So, one of the big motivations for this project was to be able to move the gate inwards so that it doesn't create that queuing issue. There you go. So, you can see how close it is today to the driveway. So, that'll be moved internal into the site, and then there's a series of other enhancements that are being made to the site in terms of new parking, reconstruction of the parking lot. There's going to be a more efficient layout of the parking, as well as sidewalk improvements and other architectural access board, ADA enhancements with handicap spaces and the like. So, certainly could have Carlton go through the plan and maybe give up high level if it's helpful. Do you want to just, yeah?
Sure. Again, Carlton Quinn with Allen &amp; Major Associates. As Mark had noted, this 29 Burlington Mall Road, the existing site is about 7.2 acres. It has an existing 416 surface parking spaces. The proposal was to move the gates, but also the existing asphalt has gone past its life expectancy. If you go out there, all the asphalt is currently alligatored, so they're proposing to also mill and repave the parking lot. And along with that, we looked at restriping the parking lot within the existing footprint. We've restriped it to gain a little more efficiency, and it's netted out four more parking spaces. It actually has a reduction of about 100 square feet of impervious from some of the radiuses that we're adjusting. So, although we are increasing four spaces, the actual parking lot itself is not increasing in size at all. We've provided much more efficient ADA stalls as close to the building as possible, redone the sidewalks to make sure they're all handicap accessible. And both gates now are about 50 feet inboard of the site to provide a little more queuing on each entrance. That's about the extent of the improvements we're looking at.
Okay. Yes, please go ahead, Liz.
So, just for my understanding, so this entire parking lot is being repaved and restripped?
Correct, yeah, yes, yeah.
And then, I have another question is compact spaces. So, it looks like there are going to be some compact spaces here. Are there more compact, like, what is the comparison between now and, or this plan versus the existing plan for compact?
We didn't do an existing compact analysis. This will net about 30% compact on the site. I couldn't tell you the exact number of compact on site, because a lot of them aren't striped perfectly as they are, so I don't have an answer for the existing compact, unfortunately.
And then, so the only concern that, you know, staff would have on that is, you know, if these spaces are being utilized by outpatient, outpatient visits, where there's a lot of in and out, you know, I don't know where the entrance is to the neurology suite, or if there's any outpatient offices in here where there's a lot of in and out. You know, we usually, we usually only allow compact spaces in office buildings where there's not a great, a huge turnover. So, are these, the other question I have is, are these compact spaces width or are they length?
That's a good question.
Are there specs?
They, they are in width. They're eight by 18 instead of nine by 18. They're one foot less width.
So, so it's width, they're width-wise, so I don't know.
They could be, they could be, um, parked essentially.
And everyone will ignore them, and they'll park their big SUVs in the block where a little tiny Toyota like mine should go.
Right.
And where are they located?
They are down here on the site, as far as, this is the entrance off of, off of Mall Road here, that, and I can pull it up as well on...
And the compact spaces are the ones that are...
That'd be over this part, this part of the site, over to here.
They will be farther away from you.
They are generally the furthest spots away from the building.
How many spaces would you lose if you didn't have compact spaces, if they were all striped as regular spaces?
That's a good question.
Okay.
Well, he's thinking about, it is only, it is only 30% of the total number, and, you know, I think that...
I'm just curious to know, because if the answer is a big number, then that matters a lot, if the answer is...
I'm going to approximate for you just based on if I had to make them all the same width. About 14 spaces.
14. So, you would lose 14 spaces if everything were striped regular sized?
Let me take that back. We would net lose 10 from existing, 14 from the proposed.
Okay, I understand. So, currently, there are compact spaces on, but you don't know which ones?
They're, they're not all striped perfectly currently.
Okay, all right. Okay. Did you have anything else, staff?
I will say one more thing. That is part of all applications that come through our department, there went through a full review with other town permitting departments, that both the fire and police put comments in that the applicant was agreeable to, that the new gates will be accessible in two ways for emergency vehicles, that they will be activated by a siren, will automatically open them, as well as there will be a transponder within the vehicles that will be connected to those gates, so that will automatically open them, so there will not be issues with emergency access if that needs to happen. Both, I want to say that for this, this application, as well as the next one we're going to talk about.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's correct.
There's two ways for the gate, excuse me.
There's two ways for emergency, for emergency vehicles, either by a siren, or as well as they, if their siren's not on, there's a transponder within the vehicle that matches up with the gate.
The same opticon system that's used on the traffic lights, is that what they'd be using?
It's like an antenna with a transponder, but, yeah.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Okay. Bill, did you have a question?
Sorry, Madam Chair.
That's okay.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I think the other question I had with regard to the site is landscaping.
And I'm trying to think, I think I got a COVID shot there. Does that make sense? Is that the same building that COVID shots at?
Right.
So, it's on the left, and if you go to the right, that may be ophthalmology or something, right? And I'm just starting to think of landscaping there. I think it's pretty good. Maybe, can you put out Google with that?
Yeah, like, from the, from Burlington Mall Road, or as you enter in?
Yeah, it, just, it's Burlington Mall Road, just...
Yeah, let me scoot you up there.
This is kind of related to that, Bill, so please forgive me. I was going to ask staff if this would comply with our new parking regulation that is... that is yet to be passed.
Perhaps. The site is currently, it was overparked.
It is overparked. So then why wouldn't we stripe it for regular spaces?
I would ask them why they, why.
Yes.
Yeah, why compact?
I mean, look, I mean, it's outpatient neurology. Parking is always at a premium for Leahy in terms of having enough spaces on site to be able to accommodate folks' needs. So I think that...
In this particular location?
It is. I mean, I think that we are. And again, we're only, we're restriping, actually losing paved surface. We're actually increasing marginally the amount of green space. And it's only a four parking space increase over what's there today, just for a more efficient layout of the parking lot. So we're not adding parking in a manner that is increasing...
Oh, I know. The concern is the compact parking. But I'm sorry, Bill, go ahead.
No, it's, thank you, Madam Chair.
Show South Bedford. Show South Bedford. That's where you see a little less landscaping.
You get there...
I walk this street a lot. This side, Burlington Mall Road, there's great coverage, but it's down here where you can see a lot, right here. A lot of trees were actually taken down recently.
Ah, you can see where they're taken down.
Oh, yeah. What happened there?
Probably salt.
The trees?
Probably.
Last plant a new tree. Some salt resistant.
Yeah, do you know what happened there?
I'm sorry, just, what was the question?
The trees that were removed. Do you know what happened there?
I think they were rotted, diseased trees that were cut down.
So is there a plan to replace them?
Okay. This image is also from August of '23, so I don't know if they're...
No, it's still like that. I walk that street a lot. What's the timing for replacing that?
Well, we can condition it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, Bill, go ahead. Please, thank you.
That's okay, that's okay. And just in the parking lot itself, I know typically when we look at parking lots, again, this is not a new parking lot, but I know we did at Kohl's. We did put some landscaping in the parking lot itself. But I know with this restriping, they're trying to gain parking spots, and if you were to try to put some landscaping within the parking lot itself, again, with the whole intention of heat islands and things like that. Just, is there anything we can do there? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Joe.
I'm good.
Tony Anne, did you have anything you wanted to ask or comment on?
No, I'm awesome.
Ernie?
Uh, no, thank you.
I have a question that's not exactly related. It's more for the gentleman from Leahy. As you know, we've been talking quite a bit about parking vouchers for our senior citizens. And it keeps running out, and we have to keep asking for more, and then there's a delay, and it takes time. So my question is, why can't we just make parking free for senior citizens at Leahy Clinic? They show an ID, they're over 65 or 70, I don't know what the age should be, and they get their parking validated, and they don't have to pay for parking. And that way, we don't have to get vouchers that we run out of, and the senior citizens...
If it's six months.
Right.
Residents over a certain age. We did have a meeting scheduled, and, you know, obviously due to unforeseen circumstances, it was canceled.
Right.
But then it was never rescheduled again. So now here you are before us, asking us for something, when we've been asking you for something for quite some time, and we're not getting a response.
Wait, wait, we did have a meeting.
Did, and it was canceled because there was an emergency.
An emergency came, and they had to leave at the very beginning of the meeting.
Did we not reschedule and have another call or?
Nope. But anyway, now here we are. And the voucher thing has, you know, it's been going on for years, and every year they run out, and they have to ask for more, and then there's a lag of a month or two, and then they get more, and then they run out. It seems like it would be much easier and smoother, and it would certainly be a huge benefit to our seniors if Burlington senior citizens just get to park for free. They show their ID, it has their address on it, it has their birthday on it. They get validated, they don't have to pay. Can you do that?
I don't have a problem with that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That is wonderful news. That makes me very happy. Let's call Marge.
No, that's wonderful. Thank you very much.
With that, we would not be giving vouchers to Marge for the senior center.
Instead of vouchers.
Burlington residents only over a certain age.
We would have to work out the details of how it is enforced. Not always that easy, but I don't have a problem with the concept at all.
Well, the way, the way it works now, like when I go to Leahy, I get my little ticket when I park, and then I have to pay on my way out. They would just go to where you pay, show their ID, somehow get it validated, so they don't have to pay, and then they leave.
Right.
Yeah, we would do that?
Here, I can do these services better eventually, so you can do that now.
Okay, so it works the same way?
So what's the age, sorry, Madam Chair? What's the current age where the senior citizens are able to obtain through the senior center?
60.
60?
At 60, okay. So then, at that rate, I feel like that if the vouchers are coming in at 60, 60 plus...
That's great, then I can get free parking too.
You should be getting free parking anyway, don't you?
I just want, I just want, I want discounted golf. I'm not prepared tonight to say how it would work. I'm prepared tonight to tell you that we can work that out. So I don't love the idea of doing it at the parking cashier. I like the idea of doing it at the point of service, which is actually easier, because if you do it at the point of service, you can bypass the parking cashier and go right...
So when they come in, you mean?
When they go to their appointment, so it's verified that they actually had an appointment.
Oh, okay.
I'm just telling you, without getting into the details, I like that concept better. More easily enforced.
So they get their ticket validated at the end of their appointment?
Right.
And then they just go?
All right, so that being said, can we have a commitment from you after our decision that you'll make this, that we'll initiate a new change within a certain amount of days after the decision is made?
So I can't give you that decision tonight, but I promise you, once you go through this process, I will go back and get that authorized.
How about if we set a date at which you will have a meeting with our staff to work out the details?
I'm fine with that.
Great, and if not, then we're going to come back and have this conversation again, because we waited quite some time to have this conversation again. Is that...
All right.
I'm positive, Ernie. Look, folks, I want to be honest, I'm just not the president of the company.
I understand that, but, you know, with all due respect, we did have that meeting. It was never rescheduled. I understand there was an emergency. We've been waiting for quite some time to have that rescheduled. And I want to make sure that we're actually going to initiate the change that we're all talking about, because we all seem to have, we all share the same common goal, is to take care of our seniors. So we want to make sure that everyone's taken care of, and I just don't want this to be delayed further, because I think that that was, what, six months ago?
Probably, yes.
Yeah, so I don't want to wait another six months, sir.
You won't wait six months.
Okay, great. So I don't know if you can set a meeting now, or if you want to...
I will, I can, I can definitely talk with you guys.
Set up that meeting, preferably for next week, so that you can hammer out the details. Staff will inform us as to what those details are. And I am really pleased that you're willing to do it this way, because it's going to be a big benefit to the seniors, and they don't have to go to the senior center and get the voucher. They could just go to their appointment. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, was that meeting including where the parking is going to go from the Life Science Building where the Marriott and the Marriott lower parking lot is, and where the new parking is going to be? Or is that not going to be part of that meeting?
We were not talking about that.
No, we weren't talking about that, but I think that that's, I mean, once that's developed, I think that's another conversation that should be had.
Okay, so that was my big thing with this. Anyone else?
No.
Where did we, so where did we net with the compact parking?
Oh, that's right.
I was just talking to Ed on that. I think what we could do, maybe to help alleviate the concern on the compact in the context of, you know, higher frequency turnover, is have that area, have staff encouraged to park there? They're there for a longer period of time, so that...
I like that.
Okay, so I think we can do that, so.
I like that. Thank you.
Good call, Madam Chair.
Yes, okay. Okay, yes. Where are we?
You guys are on page five, three, four, sorry.
Bottom of three and before.
So the motion is on page four at the top. You guys are interested?
Here we go. No, it's a discussion.
Discussion, yeah.
Yes. It's a matter of equipment, so I need a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Leahy Clinic Foundation Incorporated property owner for approval of a minor engineering change for property located at 29 Burlington Mall Road, premises to allow for the upgrade of parking control systems on site, adjusted access gate locations and adjustments to the parking lot layout, nile and sidewalk improvements, as reflected on the red light site plan set entitled "Site Improvement Plans for Leahy Hospital and Medical Center Neurology Clinic, 29 Burlington Mall Road, Burlington Mass., 12873, prepared for Allen &amp; Major Associates Incorporated, dated March 13, 2024, consisting of nine sheets, subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions as amended."
So just to clarify, the amendments are that the...
The trees.
The trees. The employees encouraged to park in the compact spaces.
Correct.
And a meeting to be held to figure out the free senior parking.
Can we say within 60 days?
I think within 30 days, we should have the meeting.
Okay, 30 days within the meeting. I was trying to be nice.
30 days for the meeting, and then 60 days for it to be implemented.
Perfect, I love it.
That sounds good. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All those in favor, we have to roll call.
LaRue.
Yes.
Rappaport, yes. Sutherland.
Yes.
Impampa.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right, next up, same people. Item B, discussion request for approval of a minor engineering change at 67 South Bedford Street. Beth E. Leahy Clinic Health is the applicant.
Same, much simpler application here in terms of not the site work on the site. There's no modification to the parking layout, the number of parking spaces or anything like that. All that we're looking to do here, Madam Chair and members of the board, is to put the same gate system that was just approved for 29 that would be located at the entrance, the two different entrance locations that are coming in off of Kimball. It's really a way for us to be able to better manage and control parking and overall utilization. This building is occupied by different Leahy outpatient elements, such as general internal medicine, dermatology, rheumatology, endocrinology, kind of myologies, correct? But, and then, you know, there's other tenants in there as well. So it would be the same type of concept, same emergency provisions. So we did meet with Captain Hanifin to make sure he was comfortable with how that would be operated with the transponders and the siren override if needed, so.
And I believe I read in the staff report that patients do get validated parking at these lots, correct?
Yeah, yeah, so the concept that they would come in for their appointment, get their ticket, if you would, and after their appointment, they get it validated, so that they leave, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Is there compact parking?
Same thing about emergency access, right?
Yep, just as, yep, as Johnny Vaughn said. I think the only, kind of the main, one of the main key differences is that the previous property we were discussing, that they're replacing the gates that are there. This one, they're adding in new gates. You can see, this is one of the entrances here on one side of the building. And then if you go down South Bedford Street, that there's also, wait, this is Kimball out, that you have. This is where it all can go.
And again, the location of these was determined through consultation with fire, just to make sure that it wouldn't be close enough to the roadway to cause any queue or backup, so.
Okay, thank you, staff?
I don't have anything on this. I'm much more familiar with this site.
Okay.
Than on this site in the past, so I don't have any concerns about this at all.
All right, thank you. Any board members have a question or a comment? Pretty straightforward on my end.
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Any board members online? Okay, seeing none, I'm ready.
Madam Chair, may I make a motion to approve the request of Leahy Clinic Foundation Inc. property owner for approval of a minor engineering change for property located at 67 South Bedford Street, premises to allow for installation of an access gate system at the existing site driveway, as with associated traffic control. Sign is just reflected on the red line site plan set entitled "Site Improvement Plans, 67 Bedford Street, from Mass., 12873, prepared by Allen &amp; Major Associates Incorporated, dated March 13, 2024, consisting of six sheets, subject to the following provisions, excuse me, following revisions, terms, and conditions." Second?
LaRue.
Yes. Yes.
Rappaport. Sutherland.
Yes.
Impampa.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We really appreciate you working with us on this.
Absolutely.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up is item eight, minutes from the March 21, 2024 meeting. I actually gave staff a whole lot of changes, which I know have already been made. I don't know if anyone else has any other changes.
I haven't had a chance to review the changes.
Anyone?
I think we have...
Do we have enough people ready to vote?
I'm all set.
Okay, do we have, can you vote? Okay, all right. So I am looking for a motion that we approve the minutes of March 21, 2024.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the meeting of March 21, 2024.
Second?
LaRue.
Yes.
Rappaport.
Mr. Yan.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Impampa.
Epstein.
Covino.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Natola.
I'm staying. I didn't have a chance to read it.
So we have 403. I think, I think it was...
No?
No, it's, it's fine.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Next up, we have a discussion. Staff is going to fill us in on MassDOT improvements at the Route 3 Middlesex Turnpike.
So at our last development coordination meeting, members from MassDOT came in to discuss what they're looking to do. They're actually looking to do improvements at the 128 intersection. Somebody tell Paul Raymond, he will be so excited. I just think of him all the time, like, whatever.
This is not a full clover leaf like he asked for.
But whenever they bring it up, I just think of him.
I will tell him next time I see him.
So what they're looking to do is fix kind of the point where you're coming off of Route 3, and you're going up onto 128 North, and you have that loop, and then you have Middlesex Turnpike merging, you're going, and then you have to go all the way up the hill on 128 North to merge onto it, and you're gunning it. So what they are doing is they are removing one of the lanes from 128 and making that a two-lane, a two-lane merge on to 128. And so, I don't know which one of these is most helpful. merge onto 128, and so, I don't know which one of these is most helpful.
This, I mean, this is the start of it.
This is the start of it. One of the things that, it's basically, they're moving a median and restriping it. So they are not adding additional pavement. It's a lot less permitting. And so, you know, it seems kind of like a no-brainer. My computer's going to die. Sorry. Uh-uh, no, don't. But yeah, so that's, that's the gist. I feel like you guys can visualize, kind of, you know, and so they, which was really wonderful that they came to us and said, you know, if you have any comments, questions, I thought that was wonderful. But I personally, as staff, I think it's a huge improvement for the area generally. So, you know, yay Mastock, or, we did it best.
Okay.
And you can see on the screen here, the last slide of it, of kind of their estimated timeline. Again, you know, things could change, but this is what they're working, they're operating with right now, of hoping to start construction in spring of '25, and then be done by the fall.
Wait, can we go back to the two-lane thing? So two lanes are going to be merging onto 95?
So they're going to give an extra, extra space in the area where Middlesex Turnpike and the exit from Route Three comes together, because you know how they merge into one lane?
Yeah.
And it's like one and a half lane?
Yeah.
And you kind of just hope to God.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but what's that going to do to 95?
Well, what they're saying is because there are so many people exiting anyway onto Route Three further down, that they're going to take a lane away from Main 95.
Just temporarily.
Just for that exit temporarily, to give, for, they've done a study.
Yeah, but they did a study for, I forget the road, from Boston that goes under the bridge, and when they made that change-
The Leveit?
It messed up traffic so bad. The lane that like goes to the side of the bridge-
The Leveit, go to the Leveit circle.
I'm just looking, can I?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Go on the Fenwick.
I want to know what it's going to look like.
No, I mean, when you're leaving Boston.
Oh, when you're leaving Boston.
So you're coming from, like, near the north end.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's, they, it used to be-
It's like you go over the bridge.
It used to be one, like, you came to one lane, and then you all merged on 95. They changed it where now the furthest left lane merges with 93, and it's-
So-
Oh, wait, I know what you mean.
Terrible change.
I don't like that one either. Yeah.
So I just am concerned-
Because you're merging on the left.
Yeah.
You're merging, merging on the left.
Yeah, that's not this.
So this is not-
Are we sure?
Yes, it's not merging from the left.
Okay.
You're still on the right.
So shifting through, movement from Exit 50A on ramp onto 90.
Part here, this is where the new ramp's going to be. So they're already on to 93, or they're already on to 95. So they're already there.
Oh, I understand what's happening. So Jess, can you see the cursor?
Yes, yes.
This is, this is a through lane.
Yes.
And then this is going to be a through lane, and the two, of the two exits, the two entrances from Middlesex Turnpike and from-
Each stay their own lane.
But, but I'm more concerned about then what happened. How are they merging into 95?
Yeah, right.
Later, further, further up.
But in what order? Are you pushing them all together in the same spot? That's more what I'm worried about. That, yeah, great, but, because otherwise, you're going to back all that up. If the merging is more of a mess onto 95, you're backing that up even more.
I couldn't, we can reach out and see if they have a-
Yeah, there is somebody here you can ask questions of.
Yeah, we can, we can reach out.
I mean, they're not asking our permission.
No, I know. I know. Do they ever ask for permission?
They're telling us. It's not really, we're not getting feedback that they're going to listen to.
Yeah. Well, they might listen. They could certainly answer questions.
They'll hear us.
Not here, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'll email Carrie.
Love Ex-Master.
Okay, cool. So, I had one other thing, discussion that I wanted to briefly bring up, and then I'll see if anyone else has anything. I just sort of wanted to let the rest of you know about conversations that Liz and I have been having about 40R, which is a law that, not like, not 40B, 40R, and it is for first-time homebuyers, or smaller homes, so to speak.
So the idea of the 40, it's a 40R, it's a, it's a, basically, kind of, a sub-district, an overlay district, that is a smart growth overlay district. So it allows more compact development, but it also says, if you have any housing that you put in, 20% needs to be affordable. And so their housing, it kind of encapsulates-
Right. Well, aren't there also restrictions on square footage?
We can impose, so we can, so we can-
We can impose that.
It gives us flexibility to, I think it would fit in really well with the town center.
So we were talking about this not doing anything quite yet, but for the future, it seemed like it might be a good thing to explore, because so much of what we're hearing is that people are looking for homes that are not $1.7 million, more affordable, and it's hard to control that. But if you control the square footage, you at least have, you're not building giant inches.
I differ on that one. I mean, if you look at a property, say, downtown Boston, I mean, granted, we're talking a totally, like, a different location.
Oh, yeah.
I can even just tell you, like, my, I had a condo in Melrose. It was 600 square feet. I can't tell you how much that condo is worth right now. It's a considerable amount. It's not considered affordable. So just minimizing a square footage isn't going to denote the actual price of real estate.
Oh, no, no, it's not going to change it, but I would think it would help to keep the prices, not necessarily make them affordable, but make them less than houses that are $3,000 to $4,000 square feet.
And as long as we can do 20% affordability. We're always going to do the 20% affordability anyways, or, you know, a certain-
We only get 15, but yeah.
We are, we're always going to do a certain percentage.
Right. So it's just something that Liz and I have been talking about, something that I think we should all look into and explore, because it might make sense.
The town center is an example of a district that's been, has a 40R on it. So just think about that. And I think you can add design review for that as well.
Yeah, you can have design review as part of it.
I'd be very interested to see exactly what the cost of those properties are.
Sure.
So, say, Lydia.
If you can give us the, the district, the-
I'm thinking about the town center.
I understand that, so if you-
No, I think she meant, you meant in Redding.
In Redding.
Oh, I can give you the map.
If you can give us the map, that way, I'd love to look it up, so that, you know, we can realistically see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is this truly, you know, is it affordable?
Yeah, how do those prices compare to other houses in Redding?
Agreed. And then, you know, again, which landowner's going to give up their land to minimize?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't be talking about taking residential property and rezoning it. It would be-
What commercial owner is going to give up their land to get a lesser return?
Well, if they can get more, if they, if they're, if it's up, see, when we've talked about changing zoning for certain pieces of property near the town center from middle housing, we were talking about how it would be upzoning. So while they may choose not to, at some point in the future, if, if people are looking to sell, they could get more money for it, if it could be built as housing. I don't know if that would change if it's a 40R district, if that would still be increasing the value or not, because you also would have greater density.
Right, but if you're not increasing the value, then-
But maybe you are.
We may, or we may not be, I guess.
And like I said, I don't have the answers.
Yeah, right.
But it's just a zoning change, right? So it's just allowing for more flexibility. It's not saying-
We're not forcing it.
It's not saying you can't keep the current use. It's just saying, should in the future you find a better use, that makes sense to do this, you can do it.
But if you change the current use, so say-
But we wouldn't.
I'm saying, if, oh, I guess if it's an overlay.
It would be overlay.
If it's an overlay, they can still utilize their property that they exist in.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, understood, again.
It's an option.
And it's not a dictate.
Right. The other thing is there are financial incentives that the state provides for adopting 40R districts. And I can look into that, but they do a per pupil incentive. So if you're, the idea is they want to increase housing near transit and compact areas. And so again, you know, they give an incentive per pupil, and I think there's also some other financial incentives to do it, so I need to really-
Right, we have to explore it, is the answer.
It's not at the wall.
And all of us can look into it, and it does allow for design review as well, or design, we can put in design standards that they have to meet, so we make sure we're getting things that look the way we want them to look in the town center. So, just something to think about.
Absolutely.
Anybody have anything else that they want? Bob? Yes, Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wonder if, Caleb, if you could throw up on Google Maps,